Prairie City Council is not back in session from executive session. It's ten twenty-one, Ms. Bynum, would you serve the floor, please?
Councilmember Roland, councilmember Randall.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Item eighteen, discuss and take action on approving Mayor Allen's appointment of Kenny Lopez as Police Chief for the city of Prairie. What's council's pleasure?
Mayor Allen.
Councilwoman Williams.
I'd like to move that we approve the appointment of Kenny Lopez as Police Chief for the city of Prairie.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the council approved the appointment of Kenny Lopez as Police Chief of the city of Prairie. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's do a voice, um, hand vote, please.
Aye.
Councilwoman Williams.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jones.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, yeah.
It's over.
Thank you for the job, but I gotta go pack myself now.
Okay, enough. Item nineteen, discuss and take action in a workshop regarding amounts of the Prairie University Sewerage Processing Payment Plan Proposal two thousand sixteen rate study analysis. Mr. Johnson couldn't be here for this evening, I'm sorry.
Uh, we're on sixteen, could we move? No, actually, wrong, wrong.
You're on ten.
Four, ten.
Ten.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I moved that item on the ten, be it moved from the general, now it'll be our Police Chief.
Second.
Can we get a unanimous consensus? Okay, it's done. I agree. This consensus is passed.
It was already considered, it doesn't have to act.
Yeah, I agree too. Okay, yeah. Eleven, discuss and take action on illegal dumping ordinance two zero one nine dash eleven eleven dash zero zero one, Councilman Jones.
Mister Mayor, I moved that we approve the illegal dumping ordinance two zero one nine one 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 zero zero one.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that illegal dumping ordinance two zero one nine dash one 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 dash zero zero one be approved. Heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The record show is unanimous. Sixteen, discuss and take action on resolution one 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 two zero one nine dash zero one for the city newsletter, Councilman Jones.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution one 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 two zero one nine zero one.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that resolution one 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 two zero one nine dash zero one be approved. You heard the motion, ready for the discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let the record show, motion passed. Seventeen, discuss and take action on resolution one 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 two zero one nine dash zero two regarding employee slash first responder appreciation day, Councilman Wallace.
That's just so that we can immediately recognize, because we're in the season Thanksgiving, uh, every Monday of Thanksgiving, we'll recognize our employees and first responders as a day of appreciation.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Randall.
I moved that we approve the resolution one 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 two zero nine dash zero two regarding employee slash first responder appreciation day.
Second, you heard the motion, ready for the questions?
All right. Attorney, how could we allocate funds to be able to, uh, basically provide like meals or food, uh, for our, uh, employees and first responders?
For like an appreciation luncheon or something like that? Um, I haven't seen your budget and I've no idea if you have anything that would fit into, I check with JJ and see if there's some way where that it fits right now?
I mean, 'cause we got, we got funds in like a municipal court, which is like community engagement or economic four B.
You can't do it for them.
I'm just saying, we got, that's a four community engagement.
I, I expect this, the mayor checks with JJ that you can find somewhere where it already fits without having to reallocate, but I, you know, I don't know.
But what, yeah, what's the first response to pass? Any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Nineteen.
I moved that item nineteen, be moved to the next agenda.
Second.
Uh, so probably moved that item nineteen, discuss and take actions on a workshop regarding amounts of the Prairie University Sewerage Processing Payment Plan Proposal two thousand sixteen rate study analysis be moved to the next agenda. You heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
I read this. Uh, I would like to amend my, um, motion from, it, how it's been stated for workshop, uh, just to take action regarding amounts owed to Prairie University Sewerage Processing Payment Plan Proposal two thousand sixteen rate study analysis.
You're gonna remove the workshop part?
Yes, sir.
And just put it for taking action?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Randall.
So do you, do you already know all of this information about the sewer process and the payment plan proposal two thousand sixteen study?
Uh, man, briefly speaking, uh, myself and Councilman Wallace with, uh, Mister JJ, he has several year proposals that he could propose to us to, uh, place to take action at a workshop. I mean, I think he could, he could talk about those proposals.
So it can't, it can't be, it can't be a two-part motion where we can have the workshop, because, I don't, I mean, y'all, y'all, y'all have said this means y'all have the information, but the, the people who don't have the information may have questions.
So if I might, it was actually my suggestion to have a workshop, and part of it had to do with the analysis that USW did on the rate study that Prairie A and M did, and some discrepancies there as to whether or not the numbers that you're looking at are the real numbers. So that's kind of why we were looking at that.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams.
And my next question was, um, Attorney Griffin, also in that meeting that we had with Bradford, we were all supposed to wait because they was getting ready to do another rate study, right?
Yeah, and we were gonna have these guys look at the two thousand sixteen rate study, and then once the next one was done, so they've looked at the two thousand sixteen study, definitely have some questions that they want to at least bring to your attention.
Okay.
And.
Because the new rate study, they said was gonna be happening in a.
I think this year, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so this is for the two thousand sixteen rate study that they've looked at, so the current amount due and owing, you may or may not want to contest once you hear what they have to say about the rate study. So that's kind of why we wanted to do a workshop before we just jumped into JJ's numbers, because those are the actual numbers, but you may question them for a different reason.
All right, call for the question.
Uh, so now, so we're leaving the motion for setting workshop in place, correct? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let the record show is unanimous. Update on James Muse Parkway, just wanted to keep council abreast that we're at the point working with, uh, Council Griffin and, uh, Engineer Line Decker and the project manager, that we're looking to post that literally any day now, so that we can get started on that work before we lose that money. But that's just keeping you updated, but I also wanted to share with you that I pushed for HUB certified inclusion, to have HUB certified vendors included in this project in the city, so just an update. Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, this would, um, when a person puts in a bid, this would be for, from Owens to, to ninety, new to ninety?
No, it goes from business two ninety, past two ninety, all the way to Owens Road and over to Jones Elementary, all of it, all of James Muse, from one end to the other, and then over to Owens Road to the school as the beneficiary.
And where is that lift station, is that lift station still gonna go on the corner of only two ninety, on that corner right there next to that skin property?
This wouldn't have impacted the lift station, they're add, they're adding water sewer.
Remember I'm saying, is one.
That we don't have now.
Is the one lift station gonna still be there?
Uh, I can't specifically speak to that, to be honest with you, I just know we're looking to get that work done, but we can follow up and check, uh, December fourth is the date that, um, uh, Line Decker was looking to have it in the paper, and that we will be able to find out those, that was like a pre-bid meeting, that sort of thing. Uh, item twelve, discuss and take action on, this is something that, uh, working with Judge, we've been working on for a few years, and we're at the point, working with, uh, Trilogy, if you want to give us that update.
Just, just real quickly, uh, we got an email back from the state requesting some additional cost estimates on three different items that were not costing out, because they were recommendations of the state actually. So, so we provided those cost estimate numbers to the judge earlier today, who also asked to develop a, an RFP or an RFQ, so that those things that are costing out, we can select, or the city can select someone to perform those functions and get those repairs done. So that, that RFP will be turned in for y'all's review and for y'all's, so y'all have to post it for Friday.
Okay, yes, Councilman Rand.
Just, just point of information, uh, we got a citizen, uh, standing and speaking about federal funding that we receive for the mold, uh, just for clarification, the city, we, we applied for the federal money from the original mold, which turned out to be because the windows were put into the city hall incorrectly. The current, the current funding that you're talking about is from Harvey and from.
Correct.
The storm damage, so there's two different sources of the mold, so what, what, uh, Mister Lev was referring to, we attempted to get federal funding to repair the mold, but we never received, it was denied because it was concluded that the source of the mold was because of a construction malfunction and not because of storm.
Actually, no, uh, we were never denied, this is that same process, if you will, Harvey escalated everything and the damage?
This was before you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So this was, this was, this was the, the original mold and the, the original remediation is because the windows were leaking.
Okay, gotcha, so yeah, this has just been a very lengthy process, and interestingly enough, he informed me, uh, about two months ago, that we were really ahead of the process versus a lot of other people with Harvey funding, but no, we haven't received it, and we actually have to do and pay for this work and then get reimbursed for it, so we still haven't received it. Okay.
And that's why it's extremely important that an RFP is done correctly, so you will be eligible for your funds at the end of the selection.
Thank you, sir. Uh, update on zip code issues, just, uh, let you know.
No, I signed up for number, uh, twenty-one, and you told me to remind you of it when we got to.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, on the mold issue with the city hall, I wanted, a couple of things I wanted to point out, number one, mold is a serious problem here, this is a public government building, taxpayers are paying for this, it's important that you have clean air in here. Our, uh, intern has been sick with respiratory problems, because first of all, her working space is out in that hallway, and up in the, you've got, where water has been coming in, in the ceiling tile, in your office, and I don't mean to offend you in any way, but when you walk in there, you can smell the mold, and I think you've had some health issues with that. So it's very important that that's taken care of, not just that, but I don't know, when we talked about tearing down the old, uh, building over here, the, uh, the attorney said that, um, there need to be precautions taken to keep those.
Somebody can always help deal with asbestos or whatever.
I'm not sure if it's safe while the repairs are being done for people to still be working in this building, if you need to temporarily relocate somewhere until you get the building, the, uh, mold remediated or whatever, because once you open that up and those spores start getting in the air, it's going to be exacerbated. So those are my concerns, and I, like I said, I know for a fact our intern has really had some serious health issues, and I'm just, I'm not a doctor, well, I'm not a medical doctor, but I'm associating it with that working, that, that mold and that, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, item twenty-two is just a letter, um, an email that, I don't know if I, did I get that to you, Ms. Bynum? From Congressman McCall, his office, uh, in DC contacted the, the federal postmaster and said that our, uh, the, the project to like wrap the zip code still fell under that ten-year thing, and that we'd be able to reapply in December two thousand twenty, at least, again, just sharing with you all to, to go with implementation that, uh, Councilman Wallace obtained as well.
Has that information been relayed to Ms. Baker? Because when I had a conversation with Ms. Baker, who's done this with multiple cities, she, she never stated this, that said this was a problem, and that the process that she relayed to us that we talked to, we have in the zip code meeting, was the correct process, and that that wouldn't be the issue if we got any necessary information to her.
She said this didn't follow that ten-year thing?
No, sir.
Okay, no, uh, whichever way gets it through.
I'm, I'm still, I, I tried, I tried, I got the email from you, I reached out to her, I haven't got an answer back from it, from her yet, but, uh, for update on that side, I'm still reaching out to her to, with the information that you brought to me.
Okay.
Uh, to relay to her to see if that even changes anything.
Sure, no, no problem, again, just like you did, just want to keep informed, but yeah, hopefully whichever one goes through quickly would be great. Uh, discuss community university initiatives, item twenty-three, Councilman Wallace.
Uh, just real quick, um, I just wanted to discuss some of the things that are happening in terms of bringing the community university together, uh, one, me and Councilman Jones were working on, uh, collaborating with the rec center so that they can start doing health classes, uh, for some of the citizens, so they'll be doing it in the Wall County Community Center, I already talked to, uh, County Judge Duhan about it. So, once a month, or however the schedule's gonna be made, uh, citizens come out, uh, do, uh, different types of classes, uh, just as a way of bonding, but also for health, um, with, uh, we have another initiative coming up, I'll speak a little bit later about Dr. Block, where we're getting some organizations to come through the neighborhoods, help clean it up, uh, once a month, so that we can have a better quality of life for the citizens, and so that the students could also find a way to do their part outside of the university. Uh, we have a bunch of hands, uh, community service ministry, uh, along with the Panther Party that goes to different neighborhoods, go door-to-door block walking, letting them know that they're here to serve in whichever capacity, they've done everything from help paint railing to churches, to clean up, uh, streets, and do anything that they can do to put their hands together, so we want, and, uh, Ms. Low, she just created a community service council, uh, for the university to help not only with community service, but also social bonding events, to bring the community and the university together. So I want, uh, everyone just to be in, in the know of how we're trying to continue to bridge the gap within the city, uh, so that we can move forward as one, as a, as a city of neighborly love. That's it.
Anything else?
Okay.
Uh, item twenty-four, discuss thirty-day report reports from Trilogy Engineering Building Inspector Bureau Veritas and USW review documents for compliance on Panther Hill Apartments, the Gate Superior Campus Edge Apartments, uh, Councilor Roland's item, what the council wants to.
But I do have a question for, uh, Mister Underwood, I think you guys received the drawings, but I know we had a plan to make, I just make sure you guys have.
We, uh, we have received the drawings from all of the properties with the exception of Panther Hill, uh, the developers sent us a link that was supposed to lead us to the drawings that we were supposed to get, neither the city nor us was able to open that link, so we've gone back to the developer and, and said to them, we're not able to assess the drawings at all.
But wouldn't this affect, I guess, by the next city council meeting, your report, you been able to have a report?
We have a draft report that is completely written up with the exception of the information we need from those drawings from Panther Hill.
All right, my question is, we approved to allocate funding if they didn't get the reports in ten days?
There was three, there was three to get it from the city, and two extra to get it from the, the developers.
So, at this point, we, we approve, it's after five days, so that way the funding, they should be able to file.
So they could buy it from the original engineer who, and do you know who the original engineer was?
The original engineer for Panther Hill was, uh, the gentleman, uh.
Line Decker?
Yep.
No, 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 he was the city engineer, that's who I referred.
Oh, you mean the engineer for the developer?
The, one who drew the drawings, they, so what they have done, you don't know who that is?
Well, now, the developer has the drawings, literally have them, and they've just not been able to transmit the drawings to us, not sure what the holdup is there, but they've just not been able to transmit, Ms. Cortez is working that issue.
Because you said, you reached back, after you said that you couldn't get it, you reached back out to them, uh, to let them know that you weren't able to get into the files.
Well, no, so, so we are working through the city to gain access to these drawings, so we went back to Ms. Cortez, Ms. Cortez went back to them, we're not contacting the developer directly.
So is that way?
Let me, uh, let me read the, this email into the record, because this took place as a result of that meeting, uh, it's dated October twenty-ninth, from Ms. Cortez to, um, Panther Hill folks, um, NC, copy myself and Ms. Bynum. Good morning, Ms. NC, per Mayor Allen, he would like to know if you could please provide the city an electronic file of the approved plans for Panther Hills, if you have any questions, please contact Mayor Allen, thank you, and have a great day. From, uh, NC Acpenar, it, uh, same day, one forty-four PM, original email was twelve forty-two PM, says hello, Mr. Meyer, here's the link, ma'am, and she sent the link to a Dropbox thing. Okay, and it says thank you, and then later that same day, uh, Ms., Ms. Cortez let me know she was able to get into it, she said received, thank you, but then, the net, well, two days later, it says that basically that the, they weren't able to get into the link and that it was Mister Peters' trilogy, but, uh, my request is what I want the record to be clear on.
Yeah, there, there've been numerous attempts, we're working vigorously to try to get this information, just don't have it in our hands, right?
Yeah, so I, I would think that, in, in response to your question, the intent behind the motion, as far as I understood it, was if they were unable to get it, that you authorized them to pay to get it from whoever had originally drawn, and I, I don't know your will at this point of the council, but it sounds like it's not, it's literally just a technical problem versus a, there aren't any drawings sort of thing, but I'm, I mean, I don't know, that's up to the city council.
Yeah, vote, so vote, it goes back to what we already said, regardless of what the situation may be, within those five days, if they didn't receive the documents that they could vote, that they was authorized to pay for the documents, because, I mean, yeah, I, I thank you, Mister Mayor, for the email change, for saying that it's not on us, but it's our duty to make sure that we receive every day, so that way they won't get another thirty days, Trilogy can't make it to provide us a report, so I would.
What, what would you recommend, Allen, just under what, what's to recommend about this?
Well, in the absence of us being authorized to go directly to the developer, we're gonna continue to work through the city, so I would go back to Ms. Cortez and see whether, I, I'd give them twenty-four hours to make that link work, after that, I'd take some other measures.
Yeah.
So, so we've already, we've already authorized you all the ability to, to go and purchase them, so I guess the other measure would be, would be us going to purchase them, the, because you've already, you've already authorized, you've already authorized spending of the money to, to go and get the drawings.
Correct. Well, it, it was my understanding that, and maybe this was my misunderstanding, was that the drawings would be purchased by you guys, are you guys saying you want Trilogy to go buy the drawings?
No, I, I guess.
We can.
So what we're saying, so what we're saying is, you said you're gonna try in twenty-four hours, in twenty-four hours, you're gonna authorize, the city's going to authorize Ms. Cortez to purchase the drawings.
Perfect, that's perfect.
That's, so why even give twenty-four hours, 'cause, yeah, 'cause we are, we've got five days, now it's two weeks.
It, it appears to be, it appears to be a technical issue between just this Dropbox links, now, why they haven't responded in the last few days, that's, that's, I can't explain.
It's been over five days.
I can't explain why they haven't responded now, so, uh, I'm perfectly comfortable with going directly to the purchase mode, if that's what you guys prefer.
Yes, sir, that's.
I'm perfectly comfortable.
Yes, sir.
And so you're still going to need the cooperation of Panther Hills, because he doesn't know who did the drawings?
Maybe we can have you contact Mister Line Decker, he may have something on record, because he was the one who initially reviewed those, a city engineer, so we can have him do that, and he may have the name of who drawn or something.
Shouldn't the engineer's information be in the packet of information that's submitted to the city?
That's kind of how we got to where we are today, we have not been able to find them on the city's own property, we've not been able to find those drawings, so then we went back to the developer and the engineer.
Well, not, I'm not even saying the, the drawings, I'm saying.
Record of who the engineer was.
They submitted an application or some form of documentation, right, isn't the city engineer, should, should.
Should be on record.
Yeah, their engineer, well, if you, if you could have the people get with Ms. Cortez and go through that file, that, that's what Councilman Randall was saying, and I would imagine it should be in the file somewhere, copy or something.
And, and, and once we get the name of the engineer.
Now, you, now you can do everything, right?
You want us to, once we get the name of the engineer.
Well, you, you're authorized to purchase and bill us, just as if we purchased them, all right?
Yeah, that's what.
Is that, is that council's?
Perfect.
Yeah, we're, we're authorized.
Someone else.
To make the purchase, because you know more about that stuff than we do.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, if we're authorized to do that.
Just add it to the bill.
Yeah, we needed that authorization, we didn't want to act on behalf of the city without it.
Yes, sir, thank you, you got it.
Okay, you can go get your plane now.
I don't know if that's it, is that it for me on this?
Yes, sir.
There's a housekeeping matter I'd like to take care of.
You can have it. I mean, try to get it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Mayor, there's a housekeeping matter I want to take care of, we have, I have here in my possession, at the first council meeting of every month, we're supposed to provide you guys with our monthly report, so this is the report for September and October, can I just, I, I can, I have copies for everybody if you want it, but I wanted to make sure the city secretary had it, so she can put it in the record.
Give it to the city secretary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, you have the whole heart, you have a thinking.
You just got a gold star.
USW, do you have a copy for them?
Look there in there.
Okay, I'll make sure they get it.
Thank you, Mister Underwood, you can, you can go get your.
Yes, ma'am, soon as I pack up here, I'm gone, I really would love to stay.
Item twenty-five, uh, discuss, discuss and take action on further amendment to November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of ninety days.
I moved that we do not extend building official duties and related free fees for an additional period of ninety days.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that council do not, uh, further the amendment to November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of ninety days, you heard the motion, ready for the discussion?
I read it, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, so, if we don't extend this, then that means we have nobody to do inspections that are gonna be coming up in the coming days and weeks, right?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Not, not especially that me.
Uh, this, well, this is for the building, building official duties.
Okay, but in the person that we, okay, in part of their duties?
They end at the end, the contract end at the end of this one.
Okay.
The fourteenth.
Yeah, four, fourteen.
Okay.
Which we've asked, and, and, like I said, this wasn't even a thing for me, this was a thing for Councilman Randall, because time after time, we've asked for Bureau Veritas to be here, and I see, uh, Mister.
Mister Chris Haver been here for several hours, he just wasn't here when we came back outside of executive session, so I don't know if you can punish him for not showing up, because he was here for hours.
But it's just like the same thing, I mean.
Okay, but my question, my question is, what, um, job aspect of the building official with Bureau Veritas is gonna hinder other businesses in the city?
No, it wasn't, because before we, before this even happened, we, we was moving away, we moved, but my question is.
That's still not answering my question.
Hold on, I'm about to ask you a question with USW, because at one point in time, when we first talked about this building official, and that's in which they was acting under Mister Corey Barthwaite, correct me if I'm wrong, USW could provide those services to us underneath the contract in which we have, would you go?
Uh, we can provide. Real quickly, good evening, Mayor and, and council, basically, we, we don't do the internal structural inspections, we provide, uh, builder's service inspections on the public water and sanitary sewer for the city.
Now, now, this didn't encompass the internal structure inspections, they still do that under our normal contract, am I right, counselor? This was for the building official thing.
We just did the building official stuff earlier this year, this is twenty fifteen, this is their, this is their original contract.
Well, I think it's attached to the wrong thing.
It has to be, we just did, we just did the building official stuff.
And we just did it for.
This year.
Well, we just did it for thirty days, an additional thirty days.
This says from twenty fifteen.
So this is the wrong agreement.
No, the November fifteenth agreement was amended to add the building official duties, so what this is referring to is.
Oh, this doesn't fit on the amendment.
Yes, so you, you still have the underlying contract, which I don't know when it expires, but this is for the building official amendment to the Bureau Veritas.
Okay, to take action on further. Okay, to take action on further amendment.
So there's still gonna be the building inspections, but they're not gonna be the city's building official?
Is that how this is, that's, that's the understanding of this, right?
That's what I thought.
Well, I just want counsel to be real clear, because you brought in Bureau Veritas so that I wouldn't have to undertake these per the ordinances in the charter.
I think so.
So if you kick out, big, hold on, you finish, so if you kick out Bureau Veritas for this amendment, then you put it back on me, cause the city has to function, guys, so what do you want to do?
I, I, I would.
Put that amendment for sixty days?
No, no, I'd do it for thirty, but we, I think we have to, within this thirty days, we have to have a workshop to see where we're gonna move with the building official, because regardless of not, but e, even this lookout, Felicia Hughes rewarded today by coming back, he sat through a couple of hour meeting, I mean, he, he didn't have to, to, to leave, and it's been times in which we've asked and not received any representation from, uh, Bureau Veritas, I'm grateful they came today, so maybe within the next thirty days, he would come back, Tom, so I.
In the next, now, you have to put a home, a home emotion, this one has to die, or you have to draw, but, but what I'm saying is, within the next thirty days, we're gonna to, if we're going to, uh, we need to start putting out, whatever the process is for, for a city official, we need to be, begin in that process, so if we're going to, if we decide we're gonna transition away from Bureau Veritas for thirty days, we can have the next option that we're, that we're bridging to already on tap, so we can say, okay, we're not going to extend, we're gonna move forward X, Y, and Z, so we need to already have, we need to have that process.
I have an advantage.
Going.
Building official?
There's other Bureau Veritases out there.
That means post, that, that means posting, whatever, whatever that process does, we need to, we need to start that process today, effectively, to start.
Okay, and, and Councilman Jones agreed to undertake checking on that building official, everything?
Yes, sir, so I would draw my motion.
I would draw my say.
And so I move that it's still ninety days, that'd be thirty days.
I would do sixty. Just because we don't know how long the process is gonna take, and it's the holidays.
Yes, sir, I'll use what? Sixty days.
I think.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that council further amendment to November twenty-four, two thousand fifteen agreement with Bureau Veritas to extend building official duties and related fees for an additional period of sixty days, you've heard the motion, ready for the discussion?
Questions?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And let the record show is unanimous? Motion passed.
And just a, a little information to Councilman Jones, um, I was instructed by another, uh, building, uh, official, that the best website to go to, to find the right building official is TMA.
Oh, no, we're gonna work together.
Okay, uh, item twenty-six, uh, update on eighty million, we had a contractors meeting with, uh, Low Kim and what have you.